April 6th, 2020 to order and we'll start with roll call.
Beavons. Bado.
Welcome back.
Welcome, Stunek.
Welcome.
Sorry, I was muted, but Bado here.
Erickson.
Erickson here.
Lambert.
Lambert here.
Stunek.
Stunek is here.
Yay. Pritchett.
Here.
Johnson.
Johnson here.
Mank.
President.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. I didn't bring an American flag. Corky now, when everybody stare at Corky and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America.
America.
To the republic.
One nation, under God.
In the US.
That worked out all right. First up, we have the approval of the agenda. I'd like to get two items added to the agenda. As it was seemed out last week, I'd like to administer the oath of office for the new mayor. And then secondly, I would like to, when we adjourn, adjourn to a closed session to take place via WebEx tomorrow at 6:00 PM pursuant to ND05 from Division 3B3 to consider the acquisition of Memorial Park parking lot.
Pritchett.
So moved.
I'm in.
Yep, I'm good.
Thanks.
We have a motion. Does anybody want to second it?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Beavons.
I'd like to add a third item to new business before we approve the agenda, and that's a procedure to fill Alderman Bado's spot.
Declare a vacancy and.
Yep, let's get rolling on that.
Okay, Pritchett, you're fine with that in your motion?
If it hasn't been seconded, Lambert.
A motion by Pritchett, second by Lambert, to approve the agenda as originally presented with the addition of the oath of office, adjourning to a closed session, declaring a vacancy in the process to fill the open spot on the city council. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes. Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, that brings us, that carries, and that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council, will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Lambert, so moved to accept.
Seven seconds.
We have a motion by Lambert and a second by Beavons to adopt the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Johnson, yes, motion carries. That brings us to item number six. Council committee reports, 6A Safety and Public Works Committee, Alderman Beavons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four agenda items. Item number one is the request to waive the sack and whack fees at 728 Fourth Avenue Northeast, and the motion out of committee is to then deny the request, and I so move.
Second.
Pritchett, second.
We have a motion by Beavons and a second by Pritchett, deny the request. Any discussion, Beavons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Quite simply, this is a request that is three years old. We made a special offer to this person, being that they had purchased some of the Habitat property to waive the sack and whack fees within a year. They came miles away from being just a little bit short at three years. They're not in the River to Rail section. Other developers throughout the area that we've approved things to have all had special dispensation, such as the Brainerd Oaks, the Shireen Pines, the Delmar Estates, all of those people paid their sack and whack. If you use the excuse, well, I'm not going to build the house because of sack and whack, well, that could conceivably go for anybody who builds a house. And it isn't fair to the rest of the people that are paying their sack and whack. So the motion was to deny.
Thank you, Alderman Beavons. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, could I just ask that if you're not speaking to make sure to mute your microphone? I'm getting feedback at my house at least.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to deny the request to waive sack and whack? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. Alderman Beavons.
Mr. Chair, item number two is the event street closure application for the crop walk to be held May 6th, 2020, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM on the streets indicated on the attached map. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, approve the attached application under the condition that the signs are removed by the landowner during the event as indicated by the applicant, and I so move.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the event street closure application. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. Alderman Beavons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is Turnback Project on CASA 20 Improvement 1901. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, postpone the Northwest Fourth Street construction until the 2021 season, and I so move.
Pritchett, second.
We have a motion by Beavons and a second by Pritchett to postpone the construction of Improvement 1901 till next summer. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. The logic behind this was things are moving along smoothly with the properties, the easement access that we need to purchase to make the project go. There's a couple of issues in that there is some timing with getting those fulfilled, and we probably wouldn't be, even if we went with a straight taking, it's 90 days plus time to bid. We're into August at the very soonest before we can start. The second thing is there is another player due to one of our easement requests, and that's, of course, as you all know, with the wetlands and the Army Corps of Engineers on the property with the arena. So rather than try and jam it in and then end up with a project that's half done before it even starts and it's snowing, it just, as painful as it said, it seemed, it seemed like the best course of action to get the jump on 2021 and start early, rather than have a project fall apart in the end of the fall.
Thank you, Alderman Beavons. I have one question, perhaps you can answer it, or perhaps City Engineer. Andy, can, in our 2021 five-year plan, we have some street projects in southeast Brainerd in the five-year plan. Are those going to be affected by the, doing the county road next year?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can answer that question? No, the county, or the Northwest Fourth Street project, we will have all the funding and all of the project will be designed and bid out as one package, and all of the funding will be paid out of that lump sum payment that we'll be receiving from the county if the turnback agreement is done, and so that won't affect funding for next year's program. It'll just push that back one year.
So you have the, your department has the capacity to manage a capital improvement program and this Southwest Fourth Street project next summer?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to postpone construction on Improvement 1901 to the 2021 construction season. We'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Beavons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our final, final agenda item is related to Project 1901 and the County State Aid Highway 1220 Turnback, and there'll be two motions on this. The first motion is to adopt the jurisdictional transfer agreement between Corwin County and the city of Brainerd for a segment of County State Aid Highway 20 between the Trunk Highway 210 and County State Aid Highway 5, which is the Beaver Dam Road, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Beavons and a second by Lambert. Is there any discussion, Alderman Beavons?
No, Mr. Chair, it's pretty well laid out into, in the, in the packet, as far as the agreement that we've made on the jurisdictional transfer. I suppose if you have any questions, myself or Mr. Sandy could answer them, but it seems, it's pretty clear to what we, to me, to be what we agreed upon 30 days ago.
Okay, I have no questions. Any members of the council have questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek. Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, that motion carries, and you have one more, Beavons?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the construction cost share agreement between Corwin County, Minnesota, and the city of Brainerd, Minnesota, for County State Aid Highway 20 reconstruction between Trunk Highway 210 and Jackson Street, County Project Number 018620-012, City Project Number 108129003, 108594001, and 108020005, and I so move.
Pritchett, second.
Motion by Beavons, a second by Pritchett to adopt that motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, if I may, just to clarify the motion, this is a termination of the existing cost share agreement that was adopted back in 2018.
My apologies, I misphrased that.
So we're not adopting, but we're terminating the cost share agreement.
Yes.
And Paul, why are we terminating the cost share agreement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With the last motion, we approved the jurisdictional transfer for a lump sum payment of money for the Northwest Fourth Street project, and with that came the county's engineering and construction shares that were originally agreed to as a lump sum payment, along with the city's share being paid by the county of construction at 100% and the city's share of engineering at 50%, along with a future mill and overlay at an approximate cost of $120,000, and the restriping of, of what is Northwest Fourth Street from Washington to Beaver Dam at an estimated cost of around $25,000. So the total jurisdictional transfer is approximately $521,000. With that, the city retains full control over the roadway, and the cost share agreement is no longer needed for the project.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which is the Personnel and Finance Committee, Alderman Bado.
All right, we have five items on our agenda tonight, the first of which is the approval and payment of bills, and I so move.
Stunek, second.
We have a motion by Bado and a second by Stunek to approve bill payment. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Yeah.
Johnson.
That motion carries, Alderman Bado.
All right, our next item is the Police Lieutenant resignation and promotion. We have two motions, the first of which is to accept Lieutenant Clefman's resignation with regret, and I so move.
Erickson, second.
We have a motion by Bado and a second by Erickson to accept with regret the retirement, or the resignation of Lieutenant Clefman. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries, Alderman Bado.
All right, the next motion is to authorize the promotion of Sergeant Michael Coltsor to Lieutenant Effective April 7th, and to set the starting wage at the Step 6 Teamsters Labor Agreement rate of 42.41 an hour, and I so move.
Stunek, second.
Motion by Bado, a second by Stunek to approve the promotion. Is there any discussion?
So there was a secondary agenda item sent out for this one with a small change. It's somewhere in the, between the second and the third sentence, but really, the gist of this is that if we were to move him to Step 5, there would be a little pay raise, but because he's losing the shift differential rate, which is about 55 cents an hour for those hours, he would actually be losing a little bit of money, and it is our policy to make sure that when we are giving people a promotion, that we are moving them to a step equal or above, and so that's why we are moving to Step 6.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Lambert, yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, that motion carries, Alderman Bado.
All right, our next item is the police officer hiring ratification, and the motion coming out of committee is to affirm the hiring, hiring police officer Dalton Langer starting at LES 2020, Step 1, rate of $27.43 an hour, with an effective starting date of March 30th, 2020, and I so move.
Erickson, second.
We have a motion by Bado and a second by Erickson to notify the police officer hiring. Is there any discussion?
This is just the final step in this process. The only thing to note is that in the agenda, it lists March 31st instead of March 30th, so the motion is for the 30th.
Okay, one day earlier.
Yes.
Other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
I'm skipping.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, motion carries, Alderman Bado.
Next item is the LCCMR submission request, and the motion is to approve staff's request to submit the Mississippi Landing Trailhead as a response to the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources 2021 Environment and Natural Resource Trust Fund request or proposal at the requested sum of 3.8 million and adopt the attached resolution of support, and I so move.
Stunek, second.
We have a motion by Bado and a second by Stunek to adopt the attached resolution of support. Any discussion?
So this is a mouthful, but basically, again, this is the continuation of the process we've been moving. As you might remember, we set aside $100,000 designated in matching funds for this, and this is the next step in that process.
Any other discussion?
One more, sorry, one more thing to note is that this, we would be requesting for the 2021 year and not 2020, just so we're clear on that.
Thank you. Any else? Seeing nobody, we'll vote to adopt the resolution. By roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, motion carries, Alderman Bado.
All right, the last item is the review of election, the election pay. Review of election pay, yes, I apologize. The motion is to adopt the attached resolution setting the head and assistant head judges pay at $15 an hour, and election judge and trainee judges at $12 per hour, and I so move.
Erickson, second.
A motion by Bado and a second by Erickson to give our highly appreciated election judges a little pay bump. Any discussion?
Yep, so this puts us in line with what the county is offering. The one thing that we have offered in the past is meals, and that item is not a part of this motion and would be brought back for further discussion, but we thought, because we have struggled to get some judges in the past, that we should at least be matching what the county is doing. The county does not offer meals, so that's a discussion we'll need to have at a later date.
Can I ask why the committee decided that that discussion would happen at a later date? Actually, I am asking that. I might even ask if I can.
I would say that we were just looking for a little bit more information on what that would look like if we were to break it up. You know, are we going to do two meals? Are we just going to break it down to one meal? We needed some more numbers on that, and those numbers were not in front of us, so we wanted to hold off on adding that part of the discussion.
Thank you. And Connie, if you could, we currently provide free meals and some snacks.
Currently, we have subs and pizza. We deliver subs for lunch and pizza for supper. For no breakfast. No breakfast and no snacks.
And we don't know what that costs per precinct?
You know, it's probably about $200 per meal, per election judges that day.
$200 per precinct?
No, per, per election, per meal. So it's about $400 probably that we pay for meals, off the top of my head.
Okay, that doesn't seem bad, but we're going to get those back in front of Personnel and Finance and discuss that.
This is Erickson.
Yeah.
If I may, my video feed was going out in committee, so I didn't have a chance to ask this, but one thought I had, staff said that, you know, these election judges are actually pretty short-staffed already, and so by not offering a meal, wondering what that does, I mean, they, I guess they could order it in, or they'd have to send somebody to go get food, so I just wondered if that it would inconvenience them or take away time from what they're already doing, given that they're already short-staffed, so. I don't, more of a comment, I guess, than, than a question, but I just wanted to bring that up, and again, I didn't have a chance to say that in committee.
Mr. President, this is Lambert.
Yeah. Lambert, then for Pritchett.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I butt in front of somebody?
Go ahead, Lambert.
Okay, as an election judge, I have to say, we do appreciate the meals very much. It's just nice to know you don't have to bring your potluck and all that stuff with you as you're bringing all the supplies in. And I'm just saying that as an election judge, so, thank you.
My comments are kind of going to echo that. My wife serves in election judge. It's a 12-hour day. You're often in places that don't have facilities to heat up a meal. You know, it just makes it a lot more convenient than when we're looking, we're not paying them a ton of money, so anything that we can do to kind of smooth it out to attract more people to this very, very important job, we should consider it.
Thank you, Alderman Pritchett, and I agree with Tad and Pritchett and Lambert that I'll go so far as to say, I think we should have a second motion after this and just to agree to provide lunch, snacks, and dinner, because it's a few hundred dollars per precinct. We don't have all that many precincts, and these are very, very much needed jobs. But right now, the motion on the table, Alderman Beavons.
No, I was ready to make that next motion. We should probably vote on this one first.
The motion we have right now is to adjust the pay to $15 and $12. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson, yes, and does anybody have a motion about lunch and dinner? Alderman Beavons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we, we set aside up to $500 to pay for election judge lunches and dinners, plus one box of Senior Center Donuts for polling place.
Second, Stunek, second.
We have a motion by Beavons, a second by Stunek, and is that per election?
That's per election, not, not per polling place. $500 total, plus a box of donuts for each polling place.
Hopefully, the center will be open then.
That's $500 total, when Connie said it costs $400 per polling place.
No, let's clarify. I meant reelection when we run it. It's like $250 for lunch and $250 for supper.
For everybody.
$400 total is what I'm seeing off the top of my head, and I would love the idea of the donuts. However, they're going to be kind of old because all the elections fall on a Tuesday and not on a Thursday. I love the idea, but.
Consider that a friendly amendment. Let's department accept it by the motion.
I know a guy at the center, I can get donuts.
You can't even run your computer.
Alderman Pritchett, you had a comment?
I was thinking about the total cost and number precincts, but Connie put that up.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek, say yes, sir.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries, Alderman Bado.
End of report.
Thank you, Alderman Bado. That brings us to number seven, unfinished business, committee recommendations. I hope you all saw in your packet, we had an applicant for the Planning Commission. Kevin Jaeger currently serves on the park board and does a great job in that committee. I gave him a call and had a good conversation about planning and zoning, and I think he will be a great asset, and I would recommend appointing Kevin Jaeger to the Planning Commission.
Move. Second.
Moved by Beavons, seconded by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavons.
Yes.
Bado.
Yes.
Erickson.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek.
Stunek's a yes, sir.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Johnson's a yes, motion carries, Mayor Mank.
Well, as last thing, and my wonderful Rose Mayor, I'd like to make some recommendations for people to apply to certain committees in the city. We have, all of these terms will be expiring on 12/31 of the year I state. Cable TV Advisory Committee, we've got two terms expiring 2021 and two terms expiring 2022. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2020, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022, and one term expiring 2023. 2020, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022, and one term expiring 2023. Also, then we will talk about E D A, Economic Development Authority. That term will expire 9/7 of 2020. Thank you very much, and now the council president.
Thank you, Mayor Menck. I did appoint my one planning commission. You guys approved that, and we still are always looking for, trying to create a water tower committee to be as large and as visible as our water tower, so please apply for that. On the agenda is 7C, postponement of MS4 Annual Public Hearing and the Presentation. Paul Sandy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. This is, we usually have our MS4 hearing at this meeting, and we did notice it for this meeting. However, due to kind of the situation we're in, staff felt it best that this is better done in person, and that we are just recommending that we push this public hearing off until May 18th, 2020, at the 7:30 PM regular council meeting where we'll do the presentation, hopefully in person.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Bevins and a second by Pritchett to move postpone the MS4 Annual Public Hearing and Presentation to the regularly scheduled May 18th council meeting, which should be in the council chambers, Paul?
I'm thinking that that'll still be at the crowing court, but I don't know if H back up and running by then.
Okay, well, and also just, I, I support this motion, but posted it publicly that it would be at the courthouse, and, and we are not at the courthouse right now, so we couldn't even hold a public hearing if we wanted to. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bedeau?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunick?
Stunick is a yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes, motion carries. 7D, Review of COVID-19 Recommendations, probably City Administrator Bergman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. As you know, on March 16th, the council made a number of, authorized a number of things as a result of COVID-19. Those included modifying our services to online phone and mail, and closing of our public buildings.
Teresa Burke has left the meeting.
Suspension of our rental licensing inspections unless there's an emergency, canceling all special events for eight weeks was the time period at which these were canceled, then cancel all advisory and hack meetings unless there was an emergency needed, and then cancel all training conferences and travel until further notice. Then, at our special meeting on March 26, the city council made, adopted our work at home plan, and all of these things are included in your packet. And so, given the governor's order to stay at home, and our anticipation that we think the governor may announce sometime this week an extension of that stay-at-home order, although we're not certain, I have been trying to keep up to date on his press conferences.
Has joined the meeting.
Listen to them every day at 2 o'clock, in case you're interested. The governor does do a press conference every day at 2 o'clock. So with that, our recommendation is to continue the recommendations of the city council regarding the COVID-19 and amend the city of Brainerd Stay-at-Home Work Plan to coincide with the timeline and the governor's recommendation. In addition, in that work plan that we had provided to you at our emergency meeting, we had identified a number of staff who would continue to work as, as normal, as quote-unquote "normal." That is primarily our police department and our fire department. Then we had identified a number of staff who could be equipped to work from home, and we are all working from home on that list. And then we had identified 21 city staff people that at the time were not able to work from home, and the council did agree to continue to pay those 21 staff. There's been some updates. We did list our police records clerk, clerks, four of them as tentative and alternates. I know that Corky has been rotating some of those staff in and out. And then, in addition, were our streets and our parks. I think one of the things that, that we are concerned about, that two-week time period was okay for us to take a pause, and probably really important to listen to the governor's orders to stay at home. However, if we start, start keeping people at home for too long, some of our projects are going to be delayed. So we have been talking internally about those on the unable-to-work-from-home, that we would implement some staggered shifts and social distancing, and bring both streets and parks back to work a week from today. It will just look different than the normal working hours, and I'd be happy if Paul or Tony would, would want to comment on that. So unless, so with that, our recommendation is to, to continue the recommendations of the COVID-19, and then amend the city of Brainerd Stay-at-Home Work Plan to coincide with the timeline and the governor's recommendation of Executive Order 2020, while calling back those listed as unable to work from home, while implementing staggered shifts and social distancing recommendations. And Mr. President, I or staff would be happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm ready for a motion, then we can have questions. Pritchett?
So moved. Move through.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Lambert to, as recommended by staff. Is there any questions of Jennifer, or Paul, or Tony? Okay, well, I'll just one comment that I think it's a smart idea to move it to coincide with any governor's orders. We don't have to necessarily revisit this every meeting, so I like that, and I support the motion, and I look forward to the Penguin getting out there and sweeping the sand off the streets. Seeing no other discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bedeau?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunick?
Stunick, say yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson's a yes, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. That brings us to new business, public hearing and resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, ordering advertisement for bids, improvement 1910 Northeast Brainerd Resurfacing Project. City Engineer Sandy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, in compliance with Minnesota statute 429, tonight, of you is a resolution and the necessary public hearing documents that we can hold the public hearing and move this project into bidding. Improvement 1910 is an improvement on streets in Northeast Brainerd. They include 11th Avenue Northeast, J Street, L Street, O Street, 10th Avenue Northeast, and P Street. We have some utility work for water mains and storm sewers as outlined in the attached feasibility report, and pursuant to the statute, the city council must hold an improvement hearing to hold testimony for or against the proposed improvement. In the notices that were sent to property owners, while the meeting was noticed prior to the stay-at-home order and the teleconferencing city council meetings, in the letters that were sent out to the residents, it was recommended that they write in their comments so that they may be read into the public record or call them in to city staff. For this improvement, and you'll see, there's another improvement hearing coming up, this improvement received no public comments from the people regarding the improvement, for or against the improvement itself. So I would recommend opening up the public hearing at this time.
From the top. So, we're gonna, I'll call the public hearing open right now. We have multiple call-in users, so I'm going to ask the host, it looks like Sean, to unmute the call-in. If any of you call-in people have something to say, please state your name. Hearing nobody. Hearing nobody. Hearing nobody. I'll close the public hearing at 8:14. And Sean, you can mute the call-ins again. So what's next? Order, the resolution ordering the improvement?
Mr. President, that would be correct. It would be the resolution attached to the agenda request in which orders the improvement approves plans and specifications and orders the advertisement for bids to be opened on May 8th, 2020, at 11:00 AM, at which they'll be publicly opened and read aloud in the council chambers of City Hall by the administrator and city engineer for action on May 18th at the city council meeting.
So moved.
Lambert, second.
Moved by Bevins, seconded by Lambert. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bedeau?
Yes.
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunick?
Stunick, yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. Next up is 8B, a public here and resolution ordering improvement approving plans and specifications, advertisement for bids, improvements 1321, 1909, and 1916 Northeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project. City Engineer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, in part, continue with our assessment proceedings. Tonight, the city council must hold an improvement hearing to hear testimony for or against the proposed improvements in this agenda request. The improvements are improvement 1321, that's the reconstruction of B Street between Gillis Avenue and Fifth Avenue Northeast. Improvement 1909 is the reconstruction of Fifth Avenue Northeast from Washington Street to D Street. Improvement 1916 is the reconstruction of B, C, and D Street from Fifth Avenue Northeast into the East Brainerd Mall property where they terminate at a dead end. There are also two other city improvements that are tied to this project. They are sidewalk improvements, and they are 1920 and 1921. Sidewalk connections on Gillis Avenue and Fourth Avenue Northeast that the city by policy does not intend to assess for. All these improvements are outlined in the attached feasibility report that was adopted, I believe, two meetings ago and received by the city council. And tonight, the council, I am recommending opening a public hearing to hear testimony for or against this improvement. As stated before, we opened up this hearing to public comment via write-ins, emails, and phone calls. I did receive one email from a resident that lives on Fifth Avenue Northeast that I will read into the public record as soon as you open the hearing, Mr. President.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. We'll have Paul read the statement he received, and then we'll unmute the call-in users. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. The concerned citizen was a Miss Linda Marsh. She lives at 429 C. Her concern, the project should fall mainly on business owners rather than residents or owners on Fifth Avenue. Most of the traffic on Fifth Avenue is business traffic. In addition, the business traffic includes frequent semi-trucks and garbage haulers that cause more wear on the street than the local homeowners cause. Also, much of the traffic is headed to the mall parking lot, so perhaps those businesses with and own semi-trucks and garbage haulers should be expected to share the cost of an upgraded street.
Thank you. I have a question on that, Paul. Is that, is Fifth not a state aid street?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Fifth Avenue, B Street, all of the improvements within this project are state aid eligible. Our assessment policy is that we only assess for the residential construction of the street, which is a standard width of 32 feet at a seven-ton road design. So, the residents along Fifth Avenue are only being assessed for the residential portion of that, which means that anything over and above a seven-ton design and a 32-foot wide width is not assessed for and covered by state aid funds.
Thank you for the clarification. Sean, will you unmute the call-in users? Thank you. Call-in users, if you have something to say on the public hearing, please say your name.
Jeff Chezak.
Jeff Chezak, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things, well, just one on this specifically. Thank you very much for this project. I have lived in this at the corner of Fifth Avenue and D Street since 1993, and there are a lot of individuals living in this location that have disabilities, whether it be they're in a wheelchair, some sort of assistance needed for walking, and D Street has been terrible, as any engineer we've had, Mr. Halseyther, may rest in peace, and Mr. Sandy both know that I have asked for the city to come and fill in potholes and cracks, and they have done a wonderful job, as far as I know. So I just want to thank you for this project, and also the other side streets, especially B Street. I hope D Street is on the books here in the near future for an extension beyond Fifth Avenue going west. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other call-in users for the public forum? Public hearing? Any other? Any other? Any other? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and ready for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Moved.
Second. Bevins?
Seconded by Bevins. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bedeau? Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunick?
Stunick, yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. Brings us to 8C, Review Licenses and Fees. Jennifer?
Mr. President, Connie Hillman, Finance Director, will be taking this item. Thank you.
All right, so as we're in a different time, we were starting to look at what license and fees renew in the next couple of months. And so staff put together a comprehensive list of all the fees that we do charge and when they are due. And a couple of us came up with recommendations for council. For example, the parking, I'm just going to highlight a few of them. The parking time limits enforcement at our special meeting, the council authorized not to enforce the two-hour parking in the downtown district. We're saying maybe that parking limits throughout the city be not enforced during the governor's order. The code enforcement, they're already being complaint-driven enforcement. And we get to our liquor renewals, and these are for on-sale only, that we're recommending the, the, we're recommending that the filing still has to be done to the state and the city by July 1st. The recommendation is to prorate the city's fees monthly, depending on the governor's order. And so we're in within 30 days after the order, giving 90 days to pay. The state of Minnesota is still keeping their renewal on July 1st, and so therefore, they kind of coincide. So we're still requesting people to do the paperwork, but we're delaying the payment and the amount to be paid. We're doing that for wine, Sunday liquor, the clubs, the cocktail room, the growlers, off-sale distillery, and on-sale beer. We're also looking at our bars and restaurants, hotels and taprooms, and those are really the only ones that are changing. We felt that if the other ones, such as building permits, sorry, I missed this one down. Hold on here. See what happened here. These are renewal. There we go. We felt that the other fees, there was no recommendation at this time. The rental housing license, I'm sorry, I missed that one. That one renews July 1st. The recommendation is to just do. That one renews July first. The recommendation is to just to extend the license um until July first, I do believe, is what it is. Um, yes, rental license to extend the license, the current license for July thirty-first. And the rest of the, rest of the fees, we did not have a recommendation at this time for any change.
Thank you, Connie. And none of the other licenses are affected businesses or do anytime soon, I'm guessing.
Right, so we thought, for example, the, the elections, we're still going to have to have those, um, the farmer's market. We don't even know if we'll be hosting the farmer's market. We felt if the peddler, if someone was still going to apply for a peddler license, they were going to, they're doing it and so to earn the income. Um, most of those are, are renewals of January first and not currently um in the state that we're in.
Perfect, thank you. Be ready for a motion to adopt staff's recommendation or any other motion.
Move to adopt staff's recommendation, Bevins.
Lambert second.
You have a second by Bevins, or a motion by Bevins, and I'll give the second to Lambert to adopt the license and fees per staff's recommendation this spring. Any discussion? None will vote by roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Bado?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunek?
Stunek, yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. Thank you, staff, for putting that together for us. Uh, that brings us to another item of new business, HD, that's administer the oath of office to mayor, point delect, I don't know what the term is, but we'll get rid of it here in a couple of minutes. Jennifer Bergman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And uh whoever is running the screen, if we could see Alderman Bado?
I think he ran away.
He didn't run away.
Oh, I'm here.
All right, there he is. All right, we get him full speed.
So that's Kevin.
So.
I knew it was.
So, Mr. Bado, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dave Bado.
I, Dave Bado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor.
Of the Office of Mayor.
Of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
Of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And handshake.
That's a COVID handshake.
Congratulations, Mayor Bado.
Thank you.
Yahoo!
Congratulations, Mayor Bado. You just gave up your vote on the city council. I'll take up a, a motion to declare a vacancy in, on the Brainerd City Council for Ward three and set a time limit to point the position. Jennifer, do you have any uh opinion on that?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, recommendation would be to post the opening from tomorrow, April seventh. Take applications through April twenty-second. And then the recommendation to follow what we've done in the past would be to schedule a special city council meeting for April twenty-seventh to interview and appoint a new city council member on May fifth. Your presence.
Would be a, a good motion if somebody's willing to make.
Bevins.
Bevins' motion. Second, Bridgette. Any discussion? Seeing none will vote by roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Bado?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunek?
Stunek, yes.
Yes.
Ann Johnson?
Johnson, yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Bevins.
I don't think Dave Bado should have voted on the last round. Can we strike his vote?
Let's strike his vote. He's the mayor. He gave up his vote. He does not.
I would agree to that.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins.
Thanks for pointing that out, Alderman Bevins. Stop trying to vote, Mayor Bado.
You will have to take my vote from my hand, my cold dead hands.
The next item on the agenda, number nine, public forum. I'm going to open up the public forum. Sean, will you unmute the callers and if anybody has anything to say? Okay, the public forum is open. If you have called in and you have something to talk about that was not on tonight's agenda, please state your name.
Jeff Chesak.
Jeff Chesak, recognized.
I bet you all didn't see that coming, did you? Uh, let me be the first citizen to congratulate Mayor Bado. Uh, and also, I thought I read that Mayor Mink serves until April twentieth. Did I misunderstand that?
I believe he was serving until his successor was appointed.
Fair enough. I don't know how well we would do with two mayors. Could we double our, our efforts, I guess? Um, thank you, Mayor Mink, for your service as well. Appreciate it. Uh, I wanted to follow up on my comment regarding the Northeast project over here on the Fifth Avenue. Regarding D Street from the Fifth Avenue portion to the Cub Food. During construction, I had bounced this off of engineer, uh, um Sandy and um there's a lot of individuals that may perhaps have a lot of difficulty during that phase getting to and from the store locations down there. And if there's anything the city can do to make some accommodation to maybe have people travel down the alley and come in that direction, if a notice could be given out or something, because it's going to affect people a great deal. Um, and also, there's one other thing I think is very important when it comes to your uh appointments for either mayor or city council members. I have had discussion with a few of you about this in, in the past, and we've had a number of appointments in the past couple of years. And if you notice the people who apply, uh, I, I appreciate their efforts and being willing to serve. However, we have numerous vacancies on a number of um boards and commissions, especially the charter commission. I think any of the applicants at either tonight or in the past when uh Mr. Erickson was appointed, all those individuals that have come forward are all capable of serving on some of these committees we have openings on. I would encourage all of you to seek those individuals out and see if they're willing to serve on the various committees with numerous vacancies. It's a I think it's kind of like, uh, it seems to me, this is my opinion, that when there's an opening that pays and is provided health insurance, we have people I hate to say it, but kind of coming out of the woodwork. And that, that troubles me when there's numerous openings that I think uh these same individuals would be very qualified to serve on, and I would look forward to their applications and getting some members appointed. Um, other than that, I thank you very much, and I think you guys are doing a wonderful job on this phone uh doing it the, the way you're doing it. It's uh, it's difficult and I, and I think you're doing a good job. I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else from the public to speak? Anybody else here for public forum? Anybody else here for public forum? Hearing none, you can go ahead and mute them, Sean, and we'll move, we'll close the public forum and move on to staff reports. Any updates since Pickett? Raise your hand. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a, a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, first of all, if you have not yet heard about the payroll PPP, the uh payroll something program that is being offered through the SBA. Uh, staff has reached out to Bladek uh to see if they would be uh willing to host a call with our local SBA lenders uh in Brainerd to see if there was something that we could do to help our small businesses be able to access some of these funds that are being made available by the federal government. I think there's some great programs out there and we know that we have businesses right now that are really hurting. So I think anything that, that we can do to try to help our businesses, um, we would like to be able to try to get something together to do that. And while we're talking about that um and other things, as you did tonight, uh, consider licenses and fees. Um, at your next meeting, we are going to be bringing some other things for your consideration that maybe we take a look at some other ways that we can find some relief for our, our residents and our businesses in the city of Brainerd. So please know that staff continues to work on trying to find ways that we can help our residents during this time when, when they really need it. Um, I think the other thing that I did want to mention, on March sixteenth, the city council did authorize a couple of things. One was to do an RFQ for uh landscaping for downtown Brainerd, and the other was to hire a, a part-time maintenance person also for downtown Brainerd. A- as you know, uh, our staff time has really been consumed by this COVID nineteen virus, trying to figure out what to do and how to work in this new normal, um, setting up these Webex meetings. And, and so I think, thank you to all of you. I think this is about as successful as we could have hoped it would be. Few kinks, but I think really it went extremely well. Um, I did want to let you know that, that we have not forgotten about that. So I know that Community Development Director Chansky is working on an RFQ. And we did get applications for interns. Um, and actually, when we reviewed the applications for communications and marketing intern, there were a couple of really great candidates that potentially could do some maintenance downtown, but also be able, may be able to help out with some of the events. So we have that position for sixty-seven days and a day is a day, no matter what, if it's two hours, six hours, or eight hours. So we really would like to try to, to get a person that could not only do some of that landscape maintenance in the mornings, but then maybe be available, knock on wood, that we hopefully have events this summer. Also, I do know that the Downtown Business Coalition has been meeting and talking about this position, the RFQ. Um, and also, you know, maybe, maybe, and I have not had this conversation, but we talk about the farmer's market. Food is certainly exempt. And I don't know if there's a way that we can continue with these farmer's markets this summer. Um, even, even during this social distancing time, where maybe we can find a way that we can comply with the social distancing requirements and still have a farmer's market. So anyway, I just wanted to, wanted to let you know that those discussions are happening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Community Development Director Chansky is here, as is HR Director Schubert too, in case they had anything to add, Mr. President.
David?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. President, just want to let you know that the RFQ has been fielded. The uh, the plan, I would like to have um responses in front of the city council on April twentieth.
Excellent, thank you. Any other staff report?
Mr. President, may I ask uh Jennifer a question? The, the farmer's market. Do we, there's no expense to the city, correct?
Um, Alderman Lambert, I, I don't know the answer. I, great, there's Connie. Thank you, Connie.
We had some expense last year for signs. That kind of stuff that we had prepared, it was very minimal. Um, the, the time is really staff's time to set it up and to take it down.
Okay, and what I was was thinking about is perhaps if we do have that, we might not be able to have as many vendors, so we could keep that public distancing for for that. Is that because we don't get any money from that. Do we, we don't get any money other than the, we have a fee for the farmer's market?
Correct.
Okay. You know, it's kind of a dumb question, but, or dumb idea, but um, that's what I was thinking. We, it would be nice if we could look and see if there's a way we could do that. But having to do less vendors.
And last year was if they showed up for so many times, we did refund part of their fee as well. So the last year was just kind of a trial to see how it worked and, and the most expense we probably had was just the signs that we would put around on the different streets.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jan. Any other questions for Jennifer?
This is Ed Mink. We have, I happen to have all of the paraphernalia stored in my building for the uh farmer's market, so uh, it's here. It will have to be out of here by the end of May, but uh currently I'm storing it for the city.
Thank you, Ed. Will somebody make a note to get that out before the end of May? Thank you. Before we go to Paul, any other questions on Jennifer or David?
And then, Mr. President, just to clarify, it is the Paycheck Protection Program. I just wanted to make sure that I got the name out there that the SBA is um, is managing the Paycheck Protection Program. And I would encourage our small businesses to take a look at that, Mr. President.
It's a very good program. Kelly, you should get on it. It turns into a grant if you keep your payroll. You're muted.
Wait till council member reports. Quit stealing thunder.
All right, Paul, Sandy.
Yes, thank you, President. I got a couple of things to report on. Um, since we've all been working at home, um, our contractors within the uh city hall um have elected to continue working, that being the uh couple of HVAC guys that are working in there currently and our construction managers. Um, being that we're out of the building, they are able to hopefully expedite a lot of the things that um, you know, uh, would have been more difficult with people in the building. So we're hoping that we can cut a few weeks off of the city hall uh remodel finish um in that regard. Also, I believe the police remodel uh did start this week. Um, mostly the work on the vestibule, from what I understand, which is the public portion of the building. Um, there was some talk that we might need to build a um temporary quarters for the staff that um mans the window. With this time of no public buildings open, um, we're using it to hopefully get the contractors in and out and get the vestibule work done while this is going on. So there is a little bit of uh benefit to this very weird time. Um, so that for those two and um I had emailed to all the council members here this week notifying that we were awarded the uh transportation alternatives grant funding for the uh Highway twenty-five trail, which would connect uh Fifth Avenue twenty-eight Street Trail and utilizing the uh railroad bridge in which MnDOT is planning to reconstruct with a trail um in twenty twenty-two. So we're going to continue working with MnDOT to coordinate our projects and get that trail connected in twenty twenty-two. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. That's great news on the, on the trail from twenty-eighth Street to Northeast here. It's a lot it's a lot of people non-motorized access to Cub Foods. Any other staff reports? Tyler, you're not staff, but if you talk for a few minutes about what Bladek's doing, helping people with this paycheck protection program and whatnot, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Uh, nice to see all the council uh in their respective uh homes, so. Yeah, thanks, uh, President Johnson, for just giving me a few minutes and we are really at the forefront of a lot of this right now and have been since it, since it started. We started working with the um, the essential business listings uh through the state. Were able to um feel pretty confident that we provided some great information in regards to the, the local businesses that were reaching out to us to ask uh if we would put their names into this hat, if you will, for for them to be able to stay open. And as most of you know, seventy-eight percent of our businesses in the state of Minnesota were on this essential work list, so it was you know, a pretty large portion, but you know, the ones that are off it are the ones obviously that we're seeing day in and day out that are affected by this and the programs that have been put into place by both the federal government and the state government, um, I think are going to be extremely impactful. The, and what the state has um indicated to us is, is that they have to wait, obviously had to wait for the federal government to step in and put programs out there for us to, and then the state can come in behind that. So the, they're encouraging most of our local businesses to go onto sba.gov to look at the programs that are available out there. Jennifer did mention one of them, the Payt- the Paycheck Protection Program. It is a really nice program and there's some, some incredible benefits with it and all. it. And all of our lenders, any, any lender that's, that's insured by the FDIC or federally insured credit unions, they're all eligible to take these applications. The application process will, the local banks will start taking them probably on Friday is what we're hearing right now. The rules came out at the end of last week and not everybody's comfortable with them or has now become comfortable with them. So Friday will be the first time you'll be able to walk into your bank and, and apply for these loans. So they're available for nonprofits as well. So it's, it's a nice program. There are some emergency injury loan programs out there through the SBA as well. You know, if you, if you apply for those, you kind of get into a queue. And right now we're hearing three to four weeks before, before any money is actually getting dispersed through those programs. So that's a little challenging. I'm on calls every morning with the state and all of our commissioners at the state level. So we're being brought up to speed with things that are changing here at the state level. So we're involved in those. I have actually helped about six or seven companies right now fill out these applications because the applications are pretty daunting. Once you've gone through them the first time, they seem a little bit easier. But if you're a business owner that has access to your financial records and, you know, can get to them pretty quickly, it does help speed up the process. So that's, that's been helpful for a few of the companies that I've helped. The state loans, the state loans are going to be interesting because the state loans are basically a, a loan of last resort. If you've been denied by your financial institution, if you've been denied by the SBA, then the state can kick in. And, you know, that's a little bit challenging for some of our small businesses because you've, if you're going down there, you, you wanted to make sure that, you know, you're, you're getting access to the funds that you need. I'm also coordinating, some of our communication is going out between us and the Brainerd Chamber. The reason that we're putting that information out to, in a joint effort along with the SBDC is, is that we're trying to reach the largest audience that we possibly can. Chamber has a, their database with Constant Contact is about 1,100 members. Ours has about 200 members and the SBDC has about another 120, 140. You know, we are crossing, we are doubling up in some of these instances, but not all of them. So we're working really hard with the Chamber and the SBDC to make sure that we're getting this information out to the broadest audience possible. So there is a lot going on. You know, I've helped with the unemployment insurance piece of this, commented on, got a request from, from one of the commissioners, Commissioner Coring, to help out some individuals getting through that process last week, which was, as you can imagine, pretty, pretty challenging. There's 300,000 new unemployment requests in the state of Minnesota right now. And of those, 95% of those are brand new to unemployment insurance benefits. So this is something that their phone banks are loaded up, their online requests are loaded up, but they're doing the best they can right now to, to help get through this. Federal side, and I'll end with this, the federal side of this, right now we have $600 a week that was approved inside the CARES Act for those individuals that are self-employed. Now, the way that this is going to work is, is that this is also for people that are on unemployment insurance. So if you've been approved for unemployment at the state level, you do not have to do anything to be eligible for the additional $600 a week that's coming from the federal government. If you are self-employed and you have not applied or you do not pay into unemployment insurance benefits, then you are at the point of that, you would not be eligible at the state level, but you are at the federal level. So what they're telling us as of today is, is that if you are one of those self-employed, you need to go to the state level, apply for unemployment benefits, you will get denied, but then you are in the queue to receive benefits at the federal level, which should start next Monday. So just as, I'm sorry if that was too long, but that's, it's, our days are changing as yours are every single day.
Thank you for that update, Tyler. I imagine you guys are just swamped and keep up the good work because our, our small businesses and our employees in this county need it. Any other staff reports or questions of Tyler? Seeing none, we'll go to, we'll go to our former mayor report. Ed, do you have any, any final thing to report on?
Well, thank you very much. Just a couple items. Continue sheltering in place. I know it sounds dorky, but putting on the mask when you're going outside or going in close proximity to people, grocery shopping or other places. It sounds dorky, but do it. If nothing else, it makes everybody else feel a little more comfortable. Something that came up, the ice is going out on a lot of our lakes and our rivers. Make certain the children who are at home now, not going to school, they off of that ice. It's going out fast. We don't need to have the emergency response people come and picking anybody out of the water. The other thing that I've talked, what I can say is, you know, when we come back to real reality, please, please pay attention to the businesses that have been closed, the restaurants, the bars, retailers, they're going to need your support drastically. This is unprecedented. The most, I've, I've been in business or worked in the retail business for 50 years. The most I've ever seen a store close down because of something such as a blizzard is three days. We're all, we're going into 12 days and probably more. So please, please, when it comes back, support them. The next thing is, spring is coming. I have flowers that are coming up in the garden, not in front of the store. We've got crocuses and such. Take care of your yards, look at your gardens, and we'll have a beautiful summer. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure being here for four and a quarter years, four and a third years, I guess. And I look forward to continue working at a different level with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Let's go on to the newbie mayor, Dave Bedeau.
Sure. First and foremost, I just want to thank Ed for his service to the community and to the city. I think it goes without saying that you did a fantastic job in the role of mayor and that you have some big shoes to fill. So I want to thank you for what you've done for us. Second of all, I want to thank you guys, the, the council, for allowing the opportunity to step into this role. I think we can achieve some pretty incredible things if we continue down the path that we're headed. But I also want to say that I look forward to allowing the citizens to make their selection come November as well. I'm a large fan of our system of government and I think it's always important to remember that it really comes down to what the citizens want. And I look forward to running in that election as well. The one thing I want to add about these meetings is they seem to be going pretty well on our end. I don't know if any of the other staff or council feels otherwise, but so far I think that it seems like it's going pretty smooth. We heard from Chizok today that he thought it was going fairly smooth as well. But the one thing I would like to add that is that if you are a citizen and you are having troubles with this current format or are having some kind of problems getting access to it or anything, please contact us at the city so that we can figure out ways of improving. Because we're not going to know what we don't know unless people let us, let, or fill us in on that. So if you're having struggles with this, it's important for us to hear from you. It's important for us to hear your voices. So I'd like to make sure that we are reaching out and that if you have concerns, please let us know.
Thank you, Mayor Bedeau. The order I see is, so Alderman Pritchett.
One thing I would like to say is kind of piggybacking on this theme of small businesses. If you love Brainerd, if you enjoy the new shops, please, if you are able to afford it, make an effort to support them. My wife and I have eaten more restaurant food in the last two weeks than we normally do in the last three months. You know, we ordered flowers for Bethany. Pick a business, get a gift card. We just got our Easter baskets from Fancy Pants. Be creative. There's a lot of things that you can do to brighten up somebody else's day and to keep some of these businesses still alive so that you can walk in and enjoy the things that have been happening in Brainerd when we're able to mingle a little bit more. Dave, Dave, don't touch your face. Don't touch other people's faces. All right.
Alderman Lambert.
Dean, I have one problem I have. I'm always touching my face. I'd just like to say thank you for our staff and answering my questions with this. And I am looking forward to eventually being out in the public. So thank you and thank you, Ed. And congratulations, Dave. Thanks.
Alderman Bevins, this is your big shot. Unmute it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My moment in the sun, my Paycheck Protection Program application and my EIDL Disaster Loan Assistance Approval Number. That's an approval that they've received my application. As Tyler was telling you, that application is daunting, but there is a $10,000 quick application that you can fill out, which is the one that I did. It's very easy. I really want to thank Avette Campbell. She serves for free on the EDA, but she works at Bremer Bank. I talked to her at least six times on Saturday and Sunday. They had a full staff down there at Bremer Bank processing these applications and they had hundreds of them coming in while I was there on Saturday and Sunday. I know other banks in town had the same issue. And thank you to all of those people who are our local support team for small business. They've done a great job. Shamelessly, Product Placement today is brought to you by, not Dave Bedeau and the energy drink, but this product placement is brought to you by the Midtown Senics right next door, owned by local owners, Chad and Jenny Kuditch. Appreciate you guys recognizing that they're open and they're struggling and they're looking for your help. And goodbye to Ed Mank. I really appreciated being next to you for over four years and poking you in the sides. I can't wait to put Bedeau in that chair. Can't wait to see Bedeau in the mandatory suit and tie that of course our charter mandates for all mayors. End of report.
Did not disappoint. Chairman Stunek.
Okay. A big thank you to Ed for all his work. And thank you to all the staff. And I'll try not to be the kink in the system tomorrow. Kelly.
Good luck. I wouldn't promise anything, Stunek. Chairman Erickson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a brief report. Being the liaison to the Northland Arboretum Board of Directors, they've met twice since I was appointed. The very first meeting, I was not able to attend, but I was able to attend their most recent meeting. It was March 26th. Unfortunately, we were doing that by Zoom as well. Just a brief update on that. I know, Mr. President, you had asked about the executive director. They have hired Candace Zimmerman as their executive director. She hails from Big Lake and she has a master's degree in nonprofit management. Very impressed. She ran the meeting perfectly and the board has high hopes and has their confidence in her as well. Just a little bit more on that. The building, of course, is close to the public as are our public buildings, but the grounds do remain open. And in addition to that, they've been working through kind of some staffing changes to, to adjust to these difficult times as well. So with that, I also wanted to echo some of the sentiments. Thank you, former Mayor Mank for your time as mayor. And congratulations, Mayor Bedeau, as well. So, and then lastly, just to set, echo the sentiments of supporting our local Brainerd businesses in these very trying times. Can't wait. This is over. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Erickson. I have a couple, a couple things to add. One, I'm, I, I've got school-aged children home now and it's kind of tough, but it's fun. It's like, like summer vacation. But I want to say, you know, Pritchett, I don't deal with, I don't deal with Mr. Pritchett as a teacher, but the, the teachers I deal with and the school district staff has done an amazing job scaling up and ramping up their distance learning programs. So my, my kids are going through every single subject, spending a half hour on every single subject that they would have every day in school. There, there's videos, there's tutorials. The school district staff, the staff at Harrison is who I specifically work with, are doing a fantastic job. So if anybody's worried about our children, they're still getting a fantastic education. Tyler didn't mention, but we have a BUFF meeting tomorrow. We're going to meet tomorrow morning as the Bladek Unified Fund and see if there isn't something we can do or something we should do to our small businesses. And with that, I'll repeat everybody's sentiment and thank you, Ed Mank, for serving the city for mayor for over four years. And that's all I have. It looks like Tyler has one more thing to say. Have it, Tyler.
Yeah, thanks, President Johnson. I just, for all of you that are on this, on this meeting right now, if, if you have constituents, if you have people that are reaching out to you as, as council folks, looking for guidance or some assistance with this, make sure that you have them reach out to me. I'm happy and able to assist them on anything that they're looking for. I, we don't know how to get to everybody, I think, but if folks are talking to you, please send them my direction. And then if you want to, any updates on some of this stuff, we're running quite a few meetings through the Chamber. We have a Business Relief and a CARES Act meeting scheduled, a webinar scheduled for this Wednesday. And that, you can go onto the Chamber's website and as well as Bladek's to find those meetings. And they're very, very informative. So that's, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Mank, for your time and congratulations to Mayor Bedeau. Thanks.
Okay. With that, anything else coming up? I see no hands. I'll take a motion to adjourn to a closed session at 6:00 PM tomorrow night pursuant to 13D05 subdivision 3B3 to consider the acquisition of Memorial Park parking lot, followed by a special council meeting at 6:30 PM. We've got a motion second. Second, any discussion? None will vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Lambert?
Lambert, yes.
Stunek, yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes. It's unanimous and we're adjourned for you all tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone.